Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is to receive the General Manager's report. We would like to congratulate... Let's see, can I do this? Okay. I need some help. Maybe I'm doing it wrong. No, I'm just trying to advance a slide. Okay, well, it's a surprise. I'm just gonna read off to you. This person is being recognized for her outstanding customer service, stellar team spirit, and her commitment to the RTC as a whole. Here we go. Bibi Razek. Over the past six years... Over the past six years, she has consistently performed as a team player going above and beyond during the busiest times. She's always willing to assist her peers and supervisor. Bibi has received many compliments for both her professionalism and her patience, and we would like to recognize her and say thank you. Yay, Bibi!
Congratulations. Customer service is always...
Congratulations.
Okay. On here? Okay.
Photo ops.
Photo op. One more?
I can't just say thank you.
I really don't do well under this kind of...
You're good.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. I love the RTC and everybody in it. Thank you so much. (applause) Yep. You're released. Back to your chairs.
Boy, you've got us trained well.
(laughing) Our next item in the General Manager's report is a brief overview of our recent paratransit and senior transportation services transition. I'd like to introduce Assistant General Manager MJ Maynard to provide an update to the board.
Thanks, Tina. The RTC recently transitioned its ADA paratransit and senior transportation services contracts. Can... I'm on. Can you hear me? Okay, okay. Great. As I mentioned, we just recently transitioned our ADA paratransit and senior transportation services contracts on Sunday, August 3rd. As a reminder, the ADA paratransit service was awarded to Vaolia Transdev Transportation for a five-year base period with one three-year option and one two-year option totaling ten years. The new contract will save the RTC approximately $20 million over the next five years. The senior transportation services contract was awarded to MV Transportation for a two-year base period with a one-two-year option and one-one-year option totaling five years. Over those five years, the senior transportation contract will save the RTC over $120,000. As with the fixed route transition, ensuring an operationally seamless transition for our customers was and is our top priority, and I'm happy to report we were successful in meeting that goal. It truly takes an RTC village to see through to completion a project as significant as this transition was. More than 45 RTC staff members spent the overnight hours on Saturday, August 2nd, working side by side with our contractors preparing for the first day of new service. Additionally, between August 2nd and nine, more than 50 staff volunteers were in the field monitoring service to ensure a smooth transition. Throughout the first week of service, Transdev and MV Transportation transported more than 12,000 passengers with an average on-time performance of 91 percent. We would like to thank First Transit for their positive collaboration with both Transdev and MV Transportation. More importantly, we'd like to recognize the RTC staff that worked tirelessly on this effort. Sue Joseph must be commended for her efforts, as well as Dan Howland and Taz Jones and their staff. RTC's fleet department played a critical role in the success of the transition, as well as the safety and security department facilities and our information technology department. Many thanks to all involved.
I will point out, we had several RTC employees volunteer their time so that they could go out in the field and kind of be our eyes witnessing the transition, and we got nothing but good feedback as we moved from one vendor to the other, so congratulations to all. Next is a clip from our... We'd like to share with you our summer heat safety campaign. This was a viral video that we created to help get the word out that it is important to pay attention to the heat as you... Oops. Ride our system.
Welcome to the chill stop. Remember when riding to your bus stop arrives on time, buying some shade, and stay cool. We have some ice cold water to keep you hydrated. We have some hats to keep you out of the sun. And we also have some chapstick. Keeps your lips nice and moist. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hello!
It gets hot out here, so we're just making sure everyone stays cool.
Las Vegas gets very hot during the summer. It is very dangerous. You can get dehydrated really quickly. Always have water. That's the number one thing that you need is water.
I think that's so nice. It's very thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a great day.
Get on the road to cool and stay cool with RTC.
You can see, we had several corporate sponsors, and we are thankful to them for allowing us to get the word out. This video will be distributed online and through social media starting next week. I'd also like to recognize some accomplishments of our friends with the RTC, Tracy Larkin Thomason, who is our Deputy Director with NDOT located down here in the south, recently completed her Masters of Business Administration, and she's been working for a few years on that. So I know she's not here, but I did want to say congratulations to her. She's taken up a lot of her time, and we're very proud of her. Also, to David Bowers, who was recently promoted to Las Vegas... City of Las Vegas' Public Works Director position. Again, a great partner with the RTC, so I don't know if he's here or not either. Nope, but congratulations to him as well. And that concludes your General Manager's report.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Moving on.
Okay. Next is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, sorry, Rudy. Item number three is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report.
Thank you, Tina, and thank you for acknowledging Tracy's hard work. I know that she's very energetic, and to continue her education like that and get her MBA was quite an achievement on top of her regular work duties. Lot to report. President Obama did sign the extension of the current transportation bill, MAP 21, through the end of May of next year. They also addressed the shortfall in federal funding between what the Congress has authorized the states to receive and how much the feds are bringing in on their federal gas tax. The way that they made up the difference was through something called pension easing, which is not directly related to transportation, but it basically allows them to bring in more corporate income tax to offset those additional transportation costs. So we're pleased that there is not going to be any slowdown in reimbursements from federal highway administration or federal transit administration for our transportation programs. Update on I-11. We did conclude the public comment period and anticipate having the corridor study findings on I-11 to the Transportation Board in September. September 8th is the date of that meeting. And we're working closely with Arizona DOT and both of Arizona and Nevada's congressional delegations to develop language that supports future development of I-11 in the years to come and the next full authorization of the transportation bill. So the bill that comes together in the spring in Congress will hopefully have this language in there. An update on I-11, as far as the construction projects around Boulder City. We've got our project just about wrapping up for about an $80 million project, which is our Phase 1. Anticipate... Bless you. Advertising on October 29th for a seven-week period for that phase, and that builds it all the way up to the Railroad Pass interchange. We're developing our specifications for naturally occurring asbestos to put into that... the contract bid documents for that contract. And based on the test results on naturally occurring asbestos, we don't see a major delay. No supplemental environmental impact statement required for that project. It does affect Phase 1 and Phase 2, so the NDOT's project and the RTC's design-build project, they'll be covered in a public meeting planned for October. The date will be determined, and I'll let you know when that date is, but that's basically to have this issue addressed to the public and address any concerns about public safety and public health, as well as our contractor and worker safety and health. So no major delays anticipated for the... those... both of those projects, NDOTs and RTCs, as far as from federal environmental approvals. For Project Neon, Transportation Board will make their decision on whether to release the public-private partnership request for proposals on Monday, September 8th. They are coming down here to hold the meeting at the district office at 123 East Washington Avenue. The space is limited, so we're gonna try to have some overflow parking and overflow conference areas set aside for people, because I know that there's a lot of interest in this project. It's the largest project that NDOT's ever put out as one contract, and we're committed to delivering it. So the Board will decide whether to P3 or to look at alternative of bonding the project, but that decision will be made hopefully on Monday. The... Also, we're proceeding with acquiring the right-of-way on Project Neon. Had some recent settlements and expect many more in the coming months. Settlements typically go to the Board of Examiners for approval. Then, a little bit about the I-15 project that's north of here, on the way to Mesquite, had a lot of traffic delays, and we had a... This is the type of project that has taken out a lot of the roughness in the road. It had some heaving sections, and that reconstruction process required us to limit the traffic to one lane, which was difficult to do with the traffic on that. And then, on the weekends, it's been very difficult. What we did to change that on that uphill side was to have a crossover constructed so that the traffic would not be delayed by trucks climbing that hill if they're northbound. Now, southbound, it's still a challenge on the weekends, especially Sundays when everybody's coming back from Utah or from Mesquite. So we're looking at some options. Unfortunately, some of the options available would de... I mean, affect the productivity of Las Vegas paving, our contractor, which would mean the contract would take longer to achieve. So we're on track right now. If we continue doing as we're doing, we'll finish before Thanksgiving. If we do some changes to accommodate traffic right now, it would delay it probably into next year. But we are doing some more outreach, getting the dynamic message signs with some traffic delays out there so people know what they're faced with, trying to get the message out there about leave early or stay late so you avoid the peak hours, and getting that messaging not only in town, but also east of Mesquite into that Arizona and Utah area. Upcoming public meetings, August 27th. We have our environmental impact statement for Project Neon had some tweaks to it that we want to display to the public and explain. One was Martin Luther King having a bridge over Charleston. The other was the at-grade intersection of Grant's Central Parkway and Charleston where there was a bridge before, so kind of the opposite of the MLK situation, and the active traffic management system that we're gonna plan on putting on I-15. So display those items, explain it to the public, get any input on that. So it's called the NEPA or reevaluation. Same thing, NEPA reevaluation for the naturally occurring asbestos that I mentioned on Boulder City bypass I-11. It's mid-October, a date to be determined. Good news and bad news on the front of traffic safety on our highways. Here in Clark County, we're 21 less fatalities than last year. 119 last year at this time, 98 at this time. Nearly 61 percent reduction in alcohol-related fatalities, so it's good news for Clark County. Unfortunately, we've seen an increase substantially in the rural areas of the state, a lot of run-off-the-road accidents, people that are not belted in being ejected from the vehicles and dying on our highways. So a lot of work to do in improving traffic safety. One thing that's positive to report is the activation of the traffic signal at Blue Diamond Road and Simmerron Road today, this afternoon. If any of the public are welcome to attend that media event, but the idea was that tragically a teenager lost her life crossing that road. We put in a traffic signal there on a very rapid timeline, ordered the poles ahead of time so that the contractor could have them ready for installation as soon as he was... had put the foundations in the ground. So it's a successful project, and it also improves pedestrian safety at some of the adjacent intersections by putting in crosswalks and pet push buttons. And that concludes my Director's report.
Thank you. Comments? Commissioner G.
Rudy, you mentioned briefly the asbestos, so there's a hearing coming up on that part of it with the I-11. Is that what you said?
Yes, as part of... Since the naturally occurring asbestos wasn't investigated during the environmental study for that project, we have to bring that information to the public.
Okay. And then, you'll mention to Forest Service about the roundabout to make sure that they properly break the line of sight in their center sections. I think there's two roundabouts going in, right?
Yes, for the visitor's center up there, Kyle Canyon Road.
Yeah. And then, Mary Martini attended a good meeting. Tracy was gone, but I had brought together some of the legislators and some of the commissioners trying to discuss, as we were talking about, the idea of transferring state roads over to county and so forth, and how to kind of maybe have a secondary conversation about that. And I think we were gonna gather some numbers on how much NDOT has spent so far on, like Charleston and Sahara. And Sahara was mostly done by RTC with the grant dollars for the BRT, but what's... We were trying to figure out what the value would be, because in some cases, rather than trying to bring the roadways up to a par, it could be, we spent this $13 million and you didn't, so give us that $13 million, and we'll put it into some of the roadways. So I hope that probably come September, we'll do another meeting, but I may need your help or Tracy's help on just identifying those dollars and then seeing how that transition would come into play. If there's fuel taxes, a better way to do it. I'd like to see how much has been spent on landscaping in some of the areas, because we cross so many jurisdictions. But part of what was being talked about and what was coming up was from constituents on Neles and some of the areas that are older roads. Not much infrastructure's gone in, the curb appeal or lack thereof, because there's been no beautification, no center... Everything's asphalt, looks ticky-tacky and whatnot. I mean, you know, it's drivable, but it's not pleasing to the eye. And so, since people see a lot of that going on in the valley, I think the east side should get some, but it also affects the west side as well, because the highways run, you know, all different directions. So I just wanted to let my colleagues know that we're... I want to appreciate, say thank you to NDOT for the first meeting. We had... I thought it was a very good meeting, and we'll be setting that up again. But to the chairman, it's not any one person. It kind of affects all of us, whether it's in the city, county, or whatnot. I mean, because Lois and I share, Sahara goes all the way, Charleston goes all the way. You got Tropicana, you got Neles. And so, just trying to really start having that conversation for planning purposes to maybe do some crossover where we might be able to then better the roads quicker and beautify them to some extent, as far as that's concerned. So thanks to your staff.
Thank you, and definitely we'll have further discussions with all entities interested in taking up some of those local roads from... that are state highways, and then either trading either compensation or bringing up those roads to a certain...
Right, or, you know, like, I think one thing, you know, you pick up some of 215, or the beltway becomes more of NDOT's responsibility versus the local... I mean, there's just... There's different ways to value that, so I hope that that's part of the conversation in the long run, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy.
Well, before moving on, at the risk of embarrassing her, maybe with the intent of embarrassing her, I would like to note that Tracy Larkin did just walk in. And Tracy, we wanted to recognize you for completing your Masters of Business Administration.
Tracy, could you stand, please? We just... We wanted to see if you look different now.
Smiles.
If there's an aura about you that... Very good. Congratulations.
Great. Thank you. Next on your agenda is item number four, which is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak on a specific posted agenda item now is the opportunity. Seeing and hearing no one will close this portion of public comment.
Mr. Chairman, next on your agenda is your consent agenda, which is made up of items 5 through 48 and may be taken in one motion.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your one and only non-consent item is item number 49, which will be handed by our General Counsel, Greg Gilbert.
This item is intended just to provide a status to the board that we took away from the last board meeting. We've completed a variety of tasks, and I'll be talking a little bit about those tasks with the intention of bringing a recommendation after we're completed with our review in September. So this is just for reporting purposes. Following the discussion of the last board meeting concerning shared bus stop concepts, we reduced the takeaways down to these three bullet points, and we tried to gather information and conduct and commence our legal review of the situation as well. So these are the three items that we focused on. What we really focused on, as it relates to legal considerations, are the impediments or the opportunities for this program to exist at all. We've conducted a review of our research... researched our easement responsibilities as it relates to the bus stops. That's ongoing and will be completed shortly. We did a thorough review of the insurance program that the RTC currently has as it relates to each bus stop, specifically in the resort corridor. We've researched the outdoor promotions contract, better understand the legal ramifications of having others at the bus stops as it relates to outdoor promotions expectations. And we started to review the concept of how this pilot program, if you will, would come into life and how it would be structured. Though we're not completed with that review yet, what we've started to understand are trends around the country at similar agencies and how they've gone about addressing this, not implementing it, but at least thinking about it. And it appears that one trend is to make sure that if this type of program were even feasible, that it would start with the presumption that it would be open to all types of tour buses and likely operators that would use it, not just one. It would be open for that type of use, if you will. And that's the path that we're trying to evaluate and proceed down is to understand whether or not that's a good, bad, or appropriate way to proceed. So those were the things that we started as it relates to the legal issues. There are certainly many more, but we thought that that would be an efficient way to at least handle the top-end issues. The second thing that we did was we... excuse me. We did reach out and are having ongoing conversations with those that participated to the last meeting, that stood up to try to better understand their positions, their perspectives, and understand the materials that they would like to submit for RTC staff review to understand the ramifications of such program. And that's ongoing, and it's been very helpful. And I think that the third thing, and I'm gonna steal a little bit of staff's thunder on this only because I'm talking about it, which has been handled primarily by MJ and her team, were what we call peer-agency comparisons. We wanted to understand what others do in these situations, if anything. So we reached out to... Wow, I didn't anticipate the graphic. That's fantastic. We reached out... Thank you, staff, for making an otherwise dry subject exciting. We reached out to these... to do a significant amount of peer agencies to understand how they go about things and have requested information and conclusions and approaches so that we could better be informed. That has happened and is going to continue probably for the next 15 to 20 days, and we'll be able to actually provide, as part of our report, a better consensus view on what's happening out there when other agencies are approached with this type of opportunity. At the present time, I don't want to speak too far out of turn, but most, if not all, of those listed on... before you do not actually enter into any type of sharing arrangements. It's not... It's not a popular format. For those that do, which are in the minority, we're gonna try to understand the ways in which they go about it so that we can provide you with a full, fair review of how they're Our goal is to provide you with a formal report in September, reduce our findings down to something that the Board can contemplate and better digest, and I think present the Board with probably an opportunity to advise us and staff as to whether or not we should proceed to formalize this and what to do in terms of next steps and how you wish to go forward, or perhaps not. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. Comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner?
Thank you. I appreciate the due diligence. I do have a real concern about our public stops being co-shared. I mean, I appreciate that, but I think we have to tread very, very carefully when we look at the policy decision on that. But I think the work background that you're doing will help us make probably the wiser decision, which is how... It's nice that anybody can request, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to come to fruition, so I hope that folks understand that part of it. And having traveled, I have... Even in foreign countries, they do not share the same stops, at least the bus riding that I've been doing, so...
Thank you. Thank you to staff. I would ask that we do... You mentioned that we've had some dialogue with some of the stakeholders, some of the speakers at the last meeting. Specifically, make sure that we talk with the city stakeholder, big bus, and anyone else that has shown direct interest. Do some outreach with them and make sure we're hearing what they're asking and they know that we're doing the research. That would be greatly appreciated.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Good work.
Next on your agenda is your last citizens' participation period, item number 50.
This is the second time set aside for public comment. Thank you. All right, our first public speaker, Manny Poznanski. Poznanski, I'm sorry. Hey, Manny. We'll get that microphone for you.
Okay. Can anybody hear me? Or no? Can you hear me?
Back of the house, do we have the handheld? Yes, we do. Thank you.
Yeah, it's working okay. Yeah, I can hear myself. Okay, all right. Well, listen, yes, my name's Emmanuel Poznanski. Everybody calls me Manny, and probably a number of people in this room are familiar with me. What I want to say is that I've become so disillusioned, disappointed in RTC, all the way from you, Commissioner Larry Brown, the oversight guy who gives me your business card, and then you throw it down to your assistant that basically doesn't even talk about my problems that I had over a year ago. Tac published 59 of my complaints to the system that's devised to complain, and probably less than 10% were ever answered within the seven to 10 business days. I wondered what happened with Tac. I've got to the point where I don't even want to call the comment line, because first of all, the way that the phones are... I wondered what happened with TAC. I've got to the point where I don't even want to call the comment line because, first of all, the way that the phones are answered, okay, they're just, I don't think they're designed to put you off, but that's the way it is. Okay, you want to get a complaint number, wait two or three minutes while they're pulling up the screen. The people that are taking these complaints are not giving them to the right people, or RTC doesn't have the right structure to take care of the problems. Ninety percent or more of your fixed route drivers, okay, do not understand that the four-point tie-down system must be adhered to per ADA. I think it's closer to a hundred percent, okay? There are so many non-compliant items, and most of those agencies that were listed on the screen there, I'll bet you they have a compliance, ADA compliance and enforcement department. We do not have one here. I tried to go to Tina, your assistant, Cindy, MJ, okay, and a guy by the name of Dwight, who used to be a whole, who used to be the leader of Viol- not Viola- Keolis, yeah. And I get to be too chummy with them. I worry about their personal problems when they don't give attention to my problems that I present to them. I wanted to go on a ride in a wheelchair with you people so that you could see what I go through every day. I got to the point where I don't even want to take the RTC system buses anymore because Dan Howland, okay, he gives me lip service every time I talk to him, okay? Everybody cries in those meetings saying, "Oh, God, I have, I have kids that have problems. I got, I got a heart for you," but I never heard about that supposed ride that I wanted to take a year and a half ago with you, MJ, and the rest of the people there. You, you, you need to have a person who's got physically challenging incidents going on in her life to be on the board like you in different agencies or different sectors of your RTC. You don't. You'll never see what I go through, and there are few of us-
Manny, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Well, okay, the way they're going to be wrapped up now is I'm going to Washington, D.C. because if I can't get anybody to talk to Tina because she's surrounded by her group of people that don't want me to talk to her, or you, Larry, that you've got the oversight of the RTC, you want to hand it down, that's the attitude. It's going to be stopped. I went and took the HOA to Washington, got my assigned parking spot in a condominium where I own a few units. They didn't want to do it. It looks like I'm going to have to go and do that until you people give serious enough consideration to people, okay? I don't even want to, you know, talk to anybody because it, there's no use. It just comes out, there's nothing wrong. There's, okay, Larry, I am finishing, and I thank you, and it would be nice to be able to go down to the restaurant at the convention center ballpark there and eat like you guys are able to do. You put in a, a door there that I've had to tell them to turn on to open the restaurant for me, but I can't go down to the levels to eat and see the game like most normal people. I wish somebody would have thought that through a little bit and do something about that. Thank you.
And I'll see you up at the restaurant, I'm sure, over the next home stand, so we can continue that conversation, which reminds me and to legal. Thank you, Manny. Greg, I pulled up an agenda item on the consent, and I apologize, I had a note to talk to you about it. It was item number forty-five, which is entering into a contract for the downtown Summerlin Transit Stop. I have, I'm an employee of the Las Vegas Fifty Ones. There's a stadium contemplated for that same area. I've been advised by county council and the State Ethics Commission to disclose on any activity within that commercial center. I've been told to disclose on this, on this situation since this is a standard RTC contract. With that disclosure, I, I did vote in favor of that, but I wanted to put that on the record. Sure. Commissioner? Dennis Hennessy?
Hi, good morning. My name's Patricia Penisi. I ride paratransit because I have lupus vasculitis, and it's given me a vision impairment, so I will not be on the road as an individual driver. My experience with the paratransit has been stellar. In the last six years, the incidence of late arrival to pick me up or to bring me to my location have been minimal. Tina, under your direction, Jerry Keating, Kenneth Rodriguez have always made themselves available. Neighbors will take you with a shotgun wound at two o'clock in the morning to the hospital, but at ten o'clock on a Saturday, they're not available to take you to Springs Preserve. Because of paratransit, I have a productive, happy, bright life. I'm able to volunteer Nevada State Museum. I'm able to take myself to Boulder City. So if I'm happy, why am I here today? The grandfather clause, morally, I wish it could be different, and maybe it will. Legally, you are within your rights. Fixed route, I live more than three-quarters of a mile. If the board goes through with the plan come July two-fifteen, I will have to leave my house, walk to a location within that three-quarters of a mile to be picked up by paratransit. I am two blocks out of district, and I know you can say, "Well, where do we draw the line, Patty? Do we draw it at three blocks, four blocks, ten blocks? Why don't we just draw it where ADA says we can draw it, three-quarters of a mile?" I don't work for RTC. I don't have the numbers. It's not top-secret information. It's available to the public. There's about three hundred of us who are grandfathered in, and I'm asking the board to consider continuing that grandfather clause for us so that if we live more than a quarter of a mile out, we can still be picked up at our homes, delivered to our location, and brought back to our homes instead of having to make arrangements to take ourselves somewhere within that three-quarters of a mile. You're going to have to consider it because of the "do not leave unattended." I cannot imagine that you would tell parents they need to take their wheelchair-bound child or children of parents who are in the land of dementia and say, "Walk them down to McDonald's. Stay with them in the sun, in the rain, until RTC is able to come pick them up." So my request to all of you is please reconsider the ending of the grandfather clause on July two thousand and fifteen. Thanks.
Thank you. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first reason I wanted to come up today is you hear so much negative coming from, just sitting where you sit, negative in these meetings. I wanted to take a moment, and it, I'm going to get some strange looks, but I want to commend MJ and Jerry Keating for their efforts in the safety and security side. Several months ago, it was brought to your attention at a meeting. MJ and Jerry worked very diligently and their staffs to do the things that, that we are seeing some results right now, some, some actions with Allied Barton and things of that nature. I'm going to reference your, your summer program there because I have a comment on that. But the one comment I want to make is, and I've said it before, inspect what you expect. It's great that we've got all these safety and security things going, but I drive the strip every day, and every day I see the same four Allied Barton guys standing at the same bus stops, sitting there talking. Inspect what you expect. So if you expect Allied Barton to be making a difference, do it. Safety, I mean, you know, I was at a meeting, safety and security meeting. We all heard with the RTC staff, MJ and her group, we heard both companies talking about their radio response. We heard one company give an exact time on response to us drivers out there if we're in trouble. We heard another, the other company, the one that their, their motto is profit first, oh, wait a minute, safety first. We heard them stand up and say, "Ours is not very good." Well, I'm here to tell you guys, it hasn't changed. It has not changed. I'm happy to see that there's enough profit in this business that the company I work for, Keolis, can hire an assistant director of operations but put nobody else in the radio room where we need them. We're still looking at twenty and thirty-minute response times for us out on the road. I was told the other day, use your, you know, and again, when the whole system goes down, that's not either company's fault, but I was told to use my cellphone to call nine-one-one. And then call, and they put this out on our, and then call our radio room, and then as soon as the radios came up, the threat came out on our CATCOM. "You can be fired if you have a cellphone on you." These are the mixed messages our companies are sending us. And you know what? The company I work for, I believe, is out looking for reasons to terminate experienced drivers. And I'm telling you what, if you're not seeing it right now on the weekends, you put in "experience" on the strip on the weekends, and you get long, Ms. Tarkanian, you're talking about long wait times, it's going to get worse, okay? Thank you very much.
Dennis, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, Dennis Hennessy. I work with Keolis. The last thing, if you don't mind, Mr. Brown. Safety is very, very important. When I'm on, driving a bus or we're driving a bus, that's our ship. I'm, I'm driving a, a street car on the strip the other day. I call in three times, got no response back because my air conditioner in the, in the cab worked, but the air conditioner back where my passengers didn't work. I had a full bus, standing room only, hundred and twenty degrees in the back of the bus. I let a passenger out that was dripping wet. I tried three times to call our radio room. I had an Allied Barton guard on the bus. I stopped at Convention Center, opened the door, and, and I went to the back and said, "I'm sorry, this isn't safe for my passengers." The Allied Barton guy called in. Because of MJ and her group, they have a dispatcher in our dispatch. Not even thirty seconds after I told customers, "Please go up to the shade at Convention Center. We'll have a bus here in just a moment. You'll be able to get on," did my phone get off, and our dispatch is screaming at me, "What do you think you're doing?"
All right, Dennis.
And I get to, and I get told, I get told, "As long as the air works for you, that's all that's mattered." Who told me that? A senior supervisor and a road supervisor. Thank you.
Raymond Fletcher? Help with that mic. He is.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Raymond Fletcher for the record. I wish I could be as excited as some of the others talking about our transit system, but unfortunately I can't. Some of you well know, damage occurred to my chair. But the thing that gets me the most is you have an individual like myself who's out there trying to find employment, trying to provide for himself, and you go to your bus stop, have a schedule posted with the time and everything. The bus doesn't show up on time, frequently late, frequently late, and at times early. I really respect the fact that you have somebody like Mr. Rodriguez working for you. He's able to communicate and find out what the issue is and get back to you. That's well and good, but that's after the fact. You don't have a time machine to go back in time to catch that bus, to get your connecting bus, to go for a job interview. I wouldn't be as upset and frustrated if it was once, twice, maybe even three or four times, but, Mr. Chairman, it has been ten separate job interviews that I have lost out on because of the RTC. I am at the point, Commissioner, and you know me, and you know I am a fighter. I am. Thirty-seven years I've been fighting, and at times I do seem combative because I have fought my entire life. I've been on a board of directors for a regional transit commission because there was nobody with a disability on it. I was appointed unanimously by my county council. And because of political corruption and because of ineptness, we lost our transit system. Had to spend a year driving my wheelchair to work in the rain, in the snow, the zero-degree weather. You remember the snow. You remember having to dig that out, ma'am. That is one thing I enjoy about being here in Las Vegas. Back where, back in Indiana, I had so many job opportunities, yet no way to get there. Here in Las Vegas, I nearly have a way to get around. Just when the opportunities come up, the bus just magically is either late or either early. I was told that the times posted were a suggestion, a, a estimate. So if you indulge me for a second, Mr. Chairman, I took the liberty of texting the number on the bus shelter, and the bus times were eight forty-eight, nine oh eight, nine twenty-eight, and nine forty-eight. That's at stop sixty-three oh eight. And the time posted was at eight forty-eight, and the bus arrived about eight fifty. Not something to get too upset about, you know? I'm not the kind of guy that gets upset over two to five minutes. But public transportation is the quality of life. How many more job opportunities do I need to lose out on? And I hate advocating for myself, sir. I'd rather do it for everybody else. I'd rather do it for the community than myself, because nothing I ever do is about me, sir. But when it's affecting your ability to provide for yourself, when it's affecting the ability to put food on your table, when it's affecting your ability to pay your NV energy bill, that increases three times through the summer months. I'll tell you something, sir, and, and I don't share personal stories. Last month, I ate once a day every other month, the last week of the month, because I couldn't afford it. Somebody like me only gets fifteen dollars in food stamps. I'm at the point, you don't see me out on the strip with a sign saying, "Feel sorry for me." You see me out there dressed nice, at job connect, at different job placements, trying to find a job, trying to become gainfully employed. But when your transportation is not on time, that looks really poor. What if I come to you and interview in front of you, sir, and I'm twenty minutes late, half hour late? You're not going to hire me. You're going to hire the person with less education, less experience, less well-groomed because they showed up on time. That's not a lie. That's a fact. So I urge you, sir, we need to do something because I told Kenny on Monday, I sat there looking at applications to fill out, and I said to myself, "Why bother? The bus won't even show up."
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Jose Mendez, Jr.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jose Mendez, Jr., president forty-two, local sixteen thirty-seven. And this is a perfect example of what, why the Commissioners should instruct General, I mean, General Manager Tina Quigley to start looking into the, the possibility of bringing public transit in-house. Stop the privatization. This gentleman right here is a perfect example. Not only him, and I'm sure other people have missed the buses. Why? Because you guys are subcontracting the work to private companies who are here for profit, not to do good for the, for the riding public. I have my notes, but the hell with my notes, excuse my language, but this upsets me because I've been here for, since 2010, arguing to the Commissioners that it is time for the RTC to wake up and start looking into the possibility of making us public employees so everybody could be happy, have a happy living wage, and not fighting for something that's being, trying to take away from, such as NV. That contract should be terminated based on the fact that their low bid is now having an impact. And that is a shame because we, not only us, the ATU, Viola, told you guys last year that the low bid was going to have an effect. And on the twenty-eighth of July, we were out there and we had a strike practice, and we had a good turnout. And not only us as the members and non-members, the families were with us. We are ready to go down the strip because it appears that NV is not- We are ready to go down the strip because it appears that MV is not interested in our working conditions and our wages. Keolus has some problems with due process. The gentleman that got an award here some months ago, he got terminated. Is that what you get? You get an award and they get terminated? Not, the guy has seven years working here. He should have been given his due process, progressive discipline, and suspended. The poor guy now is out there working probably for paratransit. He's a good worker, that's why he got an award. All I have to say now is look into the possibility of bringing public transit in-house. And if Tina Quigley can't do it, find somebody who can. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board?
Yeah, okay, it works. My name is Dean Kelly. I am a former employee of Veolia. I'm a, was an employee of Veolia from 1997 till 2002, and then again from 2003 until 2010, when I lost the ability to pass a DOT physical. I am in process of retraining my body so that I can, at some point in the next year, regain that ability and return to work, assuming somebody will hire me. I applaud my prior commenters' attitude. I agree that it ought to be an in-house, publicly operated system. However, I've lived here since 1982. I understand the Nevada mindset, the libertarian, and that's small L mindset, which is that the less government, the best. What do you suppose for 125 years, our legislature only met for 60 days every other year, and when they went overtime, they didn't get paid. They got their per diem, but they lost their salary. In the 21st century, with a state with a population over 2 million, that's ridiculous. Or part of over 3 million now, I guess. That's just, that's just patently ridiculous. And it's, and it still is even now with the, with, with 120 days every other year. The state, the state needs annual legislative sessions, but that's, that's, that's another I strongly believe in that. I come from part of the country, and I've lived in parts of the country where it's a public transit, public operated system. And it's very, they're very good systems. I was here during, during the reign of Las Vegas Transit, where the owner and operator of the system made it patently clear that he did not give a rat's ass about the locals. He made his money on the strip. And that's why you only had one, one bus in one direction on one exaggerated loop every 90 minutes, with a break in the morning, a break at noon, a break in the afternoon, and service ended at nine o'clock. And then when CAT came in in 92, he's, he canceled the residential service with two weeks to go, and then fought with the CAT, with the RTC to keep his service running on the strip. You saw CAT bus, LVT bus, CAT bus, LVT bus, until he was finally bought out. Ridiculous. But as I say, I understand the Nevada mindset. I just wish that we could somehow change it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Carolyn Higgins. I'm the Financial Secretary for ATU Local 1637. I am standing before you today as one of the members of the negotiating committee. ATU have undergone this process for 16 months without cancellations, delays, or a lack of wanting to negotiate a fair contract with parity. Parity is defined as the state of condition of being equal, especially regarding status or pay. Now, when the representatives from both companies, prior to the contract awarding, if you can remember, their comments were very vague, not clear and not plain. Commissioners, several of you were concerned at the time about what was going to happen to the employees, wages, benefits, seniority, and loss of jobs. ATU Local 1637 stepped, had stepped to, I'm sorry, ATU Local 1637 had to step right in immediately to protect the seniority of the employees. There was a snatch and grab movement by both companies, which would have taken away the seniority of drivers that have been there, and mechanics that have been there for a long time. We then started the process of negotiation, spearheaded by a head negotiator with 30 years of experience of negotiating contracts for ATU International in Washington DC and other states. And through his experience, he did negotiate track, contracts with right-to-work states as well as a non-right-to-work state. This process started in April 2013, and here we are today without a contract from either company. We sit down at the table with some inexperienced management personnel of the companies, and a great deal of time is wasted on the lack of knowledge of the bus system opposed to the knowledge of paratransit. Let's not mention the lack of money to operate the system or maintain the equipment. We do recall, you stated, you will not interfere with the negotiations. It is between the companies and the union. However, when you had a contract with Veolia, you stepped in and told them to resolve the issues within 90 days, and it was done. We are asking you, once again, step in and instruct them to negotiate in good faith in a timely manner. RTC, Keolus, MV, and ATU Local 1637 have the same interests, and that is to provide service to the city of Las Vegas. However, it should not be done off the sweat of drivers and mechanics' backs. It should not be done infringing on our livelihood, which is, in layman's words, salaries, benefits, meals, breaks, so on and so forth. And I'm, I'm really appalled, like my president, seeing passengers who are doing and trying to get around the best way that they can, and they're not meeting their appointments because of the delays of the bus. Give us more time to handle our business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Latte Hampton, LA space capital T. I've been a driver here for almost 15 years, and I really like my job. I love driving. I like my passengers, especially my regulars. When I began working here, I started out at 6:50 an hour, and most people would have quit. I have earned the five weeks that I'm supposed to get in January for my vacation, and now I'm hearing that MV wants to cut that. Dealing with the passengers on Charleston, I have earned every penny and every hour that I deserve and I want them. And for this passenger here, I make sure that my PWDs are strapped. I make sure of their location. I'm not one of those 90%, and I don't think it's 90% of the drivers. We don't do that intentionally. Guys have a lot of bags on there, and we can't get to them, but we will make an effort to make sure that there's four. Then for this passenger over here, I pride myself on being on time because I know that my other passengers have a transfer that they have to catch. So it's just maybe a handful of drivers, but please, don't make it seem like it's a big thing, because there are a lot of good drivers who drive, who like their jobs. And I remember that MV said that they wouldn't profit on our backs. That's exactly what they're doing, and they want to take my five weeks vacation that I deserve.
My name is David Hollins. I, I'm employed by MV, but I represent the RTC. And the reason why I say that is because people associate the drivers with the RTC. When something goes wrong and you have a customer complain, the first thing you want to know is how can I get in contact with, with the RTC? We should be working more together, is the way I look at it. When you're hiring outside contractors, I agree with my president, we need to be in-house. If you are gonna hire outside contractors, make sure that the contractors, first of all, if you're going, if they're, if they're being fined for being late, for, for other issues as far as being late, you guys fine them. Fine them for also not sitting down in good faith at the negotiation table. Bring, bring, you know, let's, let's get together on this. It's just, this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mickey Easley. I'm the shop store for Keolus. I want to piggyback on one of the drivers talking about Dennis when he called with a problem on his bus. I had this incident last week. I had a couple get on the bus, Maryland Parkway, at 3:30 in the morning, 3:20, because that's my time point, at Maryland Parkway in Sahara. I called dispatch and told them what was going on. This couple was arguing, about ready to come to blows, other passengers were about to get into it. They tell me they don't have a supervisor available right now. They were gonna call Allied Barton, Road Supervisors. They called me back. They don't have any of them available. So you have security out there. I see these supervisors riding around in their vehicles, Allied Barton, I see them riding around all the time. But this one night that I have a problem because I work graveyard, there's nobody around. So she says, well, can you continue around? I said, the only reason I'm gonna continue in route, I have a bus full of passengers, which are my regulars. I've been driving these people around for four years. They have to get to work. If they're late to work, taxi cab drivers, they get sent home. They don't get paid. So I continued in route only because of my passengers, and I know they're on their way to work. Had this been during the daytime, I would have stopped the bus, held everybody up. I would not have cared, but because I know my passengers, I care about them. Midnight is once an hour bus service, so they would have had to wait for another bus to come around from Cali, from being from California. If a bus has a problem, they send another bus out to pick up where that bus, at that once an hour service. They don't do that here. You have to wait till the next bus comes around, which is once an hour. I've also had Allied Barton get on my bus. So, back to the thing. She asked me, have they gotten off your bus? If they get off your bus, call me back. What good is that if I have an all-out war on my bus? What good is calling you back, telling you my other passengers, they got it too now because this was a Caucasian male and African-American woman. So it was creating a very hostile environment. Okay, so if you know who I'm talking about, you know the issue that happens on the bus. So I continued in route, but if you're gonna have dispatchers, you need to put enough supervisors out on the road at night to deal with issues that drivers have. Same thing with Allied Barton. They hop on my bus at Decatur. They're getting off at Las Vegas Boulevard doing a hop-off service. Well, why are you getting off the bus? Well, once an hour, you gotta wait another hour for the next bus to come around for you to even get on that bus, when they could be on my bus, ride with me and tell, because me and this bus cross. Once an hour service, and they're sitting at a bus stop, waiting a whole hour for a bus to go up and come back down and get them? That makes no sense to me on graveyard, if you're supposed to be riding and protecting a bus at night.
Thank you. Hold on. Please. Dennis, you, you only get three minutes. You had about four and a half, so let, let anybody else that wants to speak. Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Joseph Campbell.
Pull that mic up a little bit. Okay, good.
My name is Joseph Campbell, for the record, and I only actually have two complaints, really. I love the system here, but what I don't understand is, this is a nine-to-five job, whether it's early mornings, late night. And I'm, from my understanding is, if you do eight hours or more, you should have two tens and a thirty. But we don't have two tens and a thirty. We may have it on one end, but the nearest bathroom break is probably about 1,000 feet away from the bus. And my thing is, you know, when you're sitting in that seat for eight or nine hours, that does affect your body if you don't get a chance to walk more than just two minutes. That's, that's not enough time to get your body exercising, you know? And we are human beings, you know? We do have bodily fluids that need to get out of us. And if we don't have that opportunity, you know, we're, we're forced to take management in our own hands, which can cause us to get in trouble by the guys whom we work for. My second complaint is, I don't want to have a freeze pay. Granted, I haven't been here long enough, but I feel for those drivers who've been here as, as, as long as I've been in Vegas, you know? I don't want to see them be stuck at the same pay they've already been at, you know? If, if, I, I don't see this place being in a recession because there's still a lot of buildings going on around us, and folks are getting money every ritual way, but we are getting forced to get into a freeze pay. I mean, I know you guys can't jump into negotiations, but I'm sure you guys don't want bad publicity against you guys when you know these guys are dealing in bad faith. I'm sure you understand it, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board?
Is this on? Okay, I'll focus on this. I'm just gonna take one minute. The waitress here, I drive Charleston, and I do take pride in what I do. I love my job. I'm the guy who actually use five points, because I will make sure that you have the belt unless you refuse it. And if I already know you refuse it, I still ask. You are listening to this?
Sir.
Because there's 80%.
Address the board.
Okay. Anyway, I do take care of the waitress that I have on the bus, two, three times if I have to. I even get off the seat before they get off the bus to make sure they're still strapped, because sometimes, you know, bus shakes, whatever, we break, they, they tend to get loose. Okay? And we all know, by the way, this is to support the Charleston drivers, that this is a route that will make you quit or get you fired. All right, that's all.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Linda Johnson Sanders. I work for MV Transportation. First, I want to start off, I work midnights on Lake Mead. The down, the, the paddle is horrible. Far as the downtime, that's not MV's fault. The schedule is horrible. If I get one wheelchair, two couples, or anybody short fare, want to argue about fare, it's a wrap. They have it timed like it's nobody on Lake Mead, and we know that the Fiesta and the Texas is on Lake Mead. It's horrible. Second thing, Allied Barton. They get on at Las Vegas Boulevard, they get off at Shatz, where I go to restroom. It's the only restroom I have, whereas I can run in there, take me four minutes, put the chocks out, downtime, run in the bathroom, run back out, it's well lit, and then I go. The East End layover at Dottie's. Lot of gangs up there, pitch black. You have to walk up a hill. Safety is number one. And to me, I am the most important person on my coach. It's horrible. It's pitch black. Rob Wilders, pit bulls, anything can come out and get you. You name it. But the schedules, Ms. Quigley, I love my PWDs. Sir, I don't know who you got picking you up, but you should report them. You should report them. You should report them. That's unacceptable. I've been here working 12 years. Mr. Neal, you know me. Excellent record. We love what we do. We love what we do. I love what I do. I love what I do. I love what I do. All I need, you know what I need? Support. That's all I need, and I fly like an eagle. I need support. That's all. That's all we need. I love being number one. With Veolia, we aim for number one. We aim for number one, and you got it. Did you not? You got it. And with, with MV? I got you. Get me. I got you.
Ma'am.
All I need is support. I'm sorry, Mr. Brown. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm passionate about it. I've been doing it twenty years. I got all the awards, customer service awards, and, um, the Goodman's, the Goldman's, the somebody men's, but anyway, we're here. We love what we do. I love what I do. I got MV back, just have mine. I got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody publicly comment, Tony? Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident. I'm here, I had to come from Henderson, so I'm late, I'm sorry, but I just want to say this, uh, in the last meeting, I invited anyone and everyone, including the bus drivers, to give me a signature on what they call a promissory note. I know how hard it is to live in this city. I know how, I get on buses, I see people try to be so displeased and say it's the worst bus system in the country, and it's not. The buses most time are on time. I was just up in Henderson doing something, that's why I got here late, but the buses are mostly on time, but there's too much lying going on. People asking people to lie. Sometimes people get off the bus because they don't want to have to participate in the lying process. Lying on disabled people like me so they can stiffen, in other words, a dignified way of stealing money from the sick. Sticking my name in there on the bus, and I fall asleep because they have too much false information going in, and it lays heavy on the sick people. They lie, the doctors, some of them left here because they couldn't afford medical malpractice insurance. So when a patient gets sick off these lies they tell, or somebody gets in an accident off these lies, that's why they call insurance liability. You better have some liability to drive, because they're telling so many lies, you're liable to get in an accident any day. It makes you accident-prone to have all them lies in there. These people that's lying, they're trying to get money. Some of them selling drugs, I'm tired of them thieving off of me. I might last here a year. It's not the bus system that's running me out of this city. It's the liars that get on the bus monitoring and lying, and the people that's full of fear, so they scared not to lie. They feel threatened, so they're too afraid not to participate in the lying process. The lying is stealing the money. That's why I'm inviting people to give me a signature on a promissory note. I'm not running from them, but I'm just tiring the fool with people that's lying and trying to steal money and using the bus company to sell drugs and steal money and set up their drug-dealing racket through the bus system with this lying system. So I invite anybody and everybody to give me a signature on a promissory note. It's a life-and-death situation in Las Vegas. The programs, the Catholic Church won this country, those type programs would bring pain and suffering on us as a nation. But the Bible say, why do men love darkness rather than light? Their deeds are evil. They're hiding in the darkness. They're doing something they shouldn't be doing, and they're stealing money, greed. They didn't learn how to tit, support a charitable organization, and they'll be blessed, and they won't have to run over sickly people like myself, and some of these disabled people just throwing their hands up, saying can't beat them, join them. And I feel sorry for the ones in the wheelchair, chairs that's going along with it, because they're in a, a even crippling situation in my health, they're confined to a wheelchair, but they're too afraid not to lie when they're ordered to, and to go along with it. Thank you, have a great day.
Morning, my name is Sam Santoria, Vice President, ATU Local 1637. Hear a lot of comments about the bus schedules, about people missing job opportunities because the bus is late. That, that, you know, it's bad, but also people have to realize, this isn't a NASA space launch, that sometimes you have to allow for more than one bus and wait out there a little earlier, like I had to do when I first got the job of driving a bus. I had to wait for three buses to make sure I got to work on time, because I had no car. So that's, and, and the employer knew that a bus would break down, they didn't care. I said, the bus transmission went out. He's, oh, I have it right here, but you're getting a miss out. That was with Veolia, they're good people. Um, also, meal breaks and toilet breaks give us our basic needs, and that's what we really need right now, which we're not getting. As far as contract negotiations, Keolis, uh, they're moving in the right direction. They at least have decision-makers at the table, people who could make a decision. The other company, uh, they put in people who, they have to make phone calls and call corporate and call whatever, just to get a sentence approved, and we're, we're not getting anywhere with them. There will be a strike, or at least there will be a vote taken. I can't guarantee a strike, guarantee the vote will be taken, and who's going to affect the most is the people of North Las Vegas. Those are the people who ride the bus to depend to get out to Henderson and everything else for their jobs, and it's not going to be right that they're going to have to, to miss work. Maybe somebody up there could light a fire on their butts over here. They have a gentleman here today who's a decision-maker, but he doesn't come to negotiations. And I'm not going to say Mr. Fritz's name. Have a good day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this morning? Dennis, how, how many, how many seconds do you want?
Give me no more than one minute. One eighty.
Fifty-nine seconds.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet.
First off, it's all what we hear. What I'm hearing, sitting here, is that we all have a lot more confidence in you doing the job than the people that you have brought in to do the job. That's what we're asking for. You guys take our back, but again, I don't want to waste my time. Last night, eleven-thirty PM, I went down to check on the cleanliness of our buses. I went to deuce number one fifty-six that was ready to go out on the yard last night. Now, mind you, deuce number one fifty-six, it'll go out for the graveyard shift, it'll come back when that driver comes back. It might get a dirty quick mop job, it fueled, and back out on the road it goes again. How many of you familiar with Channel thirteen, thirteen's, um, Dirty Dining? Because if we were restaurants, we'd be on Channel thirteen every night. This right here is the white towel that started out like this. Mr. Arcane, Ms. G. This is the driver's area. This is the driver's area. This is a bus that's been cleaned thoroughly by Silver State. This is what we deal with as a driver. I'm not done. One point one million passengers.
You're going to be, you're going to be done pretty quick.
One point one million passengers a month on the strip. This is the floor upstairs and downstairs of a clean bus.
One more illustration.
No more, of a clean bus, guys. Hey, alls I can say is inspect what you expect. Restaurants do evaluations. If you don't have a program or don't have a form where inspection to be done, and you can use liquidated damages, because that's the magic word, Silver State should be fined for this.
All right. That was just about fifty-nine seconds, Dennis. That was good. All right, thank you all for coming this morning.
Mr. Chairman, could I say something?
Counsel one.
Relating to these comments. Legal, I have no problem with that. Just a few things I wanted to go over. On this grandfathering, Tina, could you, uh, give us a report or let us know at the next meeting if it's possible to extend the time for the grandfathering? I mean, you know the costs and all that other, we do not, but could you let us know that if there's a possibility that the grandfathering can be extended?
We can bring back an update on the grandfather provisions and discuss the implications with you.
Thank you. Secondly, as far as Allied Barton, you know, as I recall, we started all of this with additional security and everything because of what the drivers mentioned to us in meetings here. I do hope that we are evaluating. There seems to be a lot of concern at each meeting. We've had comments made. I'm not there, I don't know all the legitimacy of the comments, but there is enough that I feel that in some way, we should be able to evaluate. I, maybe you need to put a sting purse in there, or whatever the police do, but, uh, uh, so that we know, are they sitting when they could be doing something else? Could we give additional guidance as to, uh, not wasting the time sitting on a bench, as one of these speakers told us? If you could do that and let us know that. And thirdly, some time ago, I think it was about a year ago, you know, I had asked about having meetings so that the bus drivers could come and meet with personnel, uh, of our RTC, and you and I and she have discussed this often, and you're still having those meetings, right?
Yeah, I'm going to turn that over to, for response to MJ Maynard.
Uh, yes, we are. Today, I were actually.
And do these things come up at the meeting, the questions at, I mean, because to, to me, I thought that as a commission, we had tried to solve the problems that you're bringing up here by having a greater interaction between personnel at RTC with the bus drivers with these daily problems that they have. And it, I, it, are they utilizing it? Are people coming and bringing forth problems such as the ones they're bringing here?
Actually, we, when we meet with the, the drivers, and they share with us things that we have control over, you know, they may talk about issues with their employer, um, remind them they had to, you know, to speak to their employees about that, because they're not our staff, but things we have control over, we actually, um, compile the list, send it out to them for their review. They send it back, and then we put together an action plan to address what we have control of, what we can take care of for the drivers. We, we really want to try and make sure that we can do all that we can on behalf to help with their jobs.
So do you? MJ and her team meet quarterly, they do the focus groups, but what we can do, what we can, we can talk about is bringing to the commission just a, a brief summary of each one of those quarterly meetings and the issues that were discussed.
If you could just let us know, because I think at the time, we were hoping this would be effective, so that these problems that occur daily, and you wouldn't be aware of them unless you're driving the bus yourself, uh, could be addressed quickly by RTC. Now, there were some things I know that we can't address, we don't have the authority, but if we could do that, I would greatly appreciate that. And then lastly, Rudy, I hope your chair got fixed okay, and that, that problem that we had with the wheelchair, you know, I spoke with you, uh, for those who have wheelchairs and how they're strapped on the buses, my understanding is that was taken care of. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I wish we could solve all the problems. I do feel we're trying to get to the point where we're doing better and better each time. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, and we'll close the public comment period.
Um, just along those lines, I would ask that we get a report, um, when MJ says that they explain to the drivers what we have control over, I'd like to know what that is. So at some point, it's very clear of what our role is versus their role, and then that shouldn't stop us from then reaching out to the management teams at the both companies, and then say, here are issues that need to be addressed. But I'd like to know what the reporting back of addressing those issues are, okay? I think, I, I would like to know if there's complaints, if it's disability issues such as what Manny brought up, whom do they call now? And then what is the resolution? Do we have a, a, a citizens committee made up with folks, especially those from the disabled community, that could help advise, especially with the new paratransit piece? If not, maybe we should explore that. The security commissioner talked about, or councilwoman already talked about. And at some point, I'd like to have a report on how schedules are done, not specifically, but for example, when I rode the bus to find out how long it took to get to the VA and the transit time, and there was two minutes in between, and there was no way in heck I could go to the bathroom, let alone the driver, let alone anybody else. And so you have, we have to look at those interconnections, and sometimes you may not have that as RTC, but I think we really have to be sensitive that we give people enough time, not only for the drivers to go to the restroom, because I had the gal one day, she had to stop and run into a Denny's or whatever to use the restroom there. Those are factors, even though they're not our employees, they are our representatives. So we need to figure out where we need to go on that part of it. Thank you.
All right. Staff got some good direction there? All right, thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.